Welcome to another meeting of the Lorain County Commissioners broadcast exclusively on your Lorain County Community College Education Station. The Lorain County Commissioners quarterly invite you to see the meeting live and in person every Thursday morning. The meetings are located in the Lorain County Administration Building located at 226 Middle Avenue in downtown Aliria. The meetings start at 9:30 a.m. on most weeks. Now, enjoy the meeting.
Good morning, Kathy Petrie. By the way, did you see the other Kathy Petrie on television who's a pilot?
No.
It was a special the other night I was watching and all of a sudden I heard Kathy Petrie and I ran to the television. I thought, "I'm gonna see Kathy Petrie from Squires Anderson Dempsey. She's a pilot."
Well, that's interesting that it's nothing like being bond counsel. Anyway, I'm here in my capacity as counsel to Lorain County on this hospital revenue bond issue that is being requested by EMH Regional Medical Center. And as indicated on the agenda, this was approved by your CIC at its last meeting. I have reviewed this resolution and the agreement. I've also reviewed the bond resolution and the financing documents and they have in them our standard requirements with respect to indemnification and also with respect to the payment of any additional interest expense that the county might incur by virtue of not being able to issue bank qualified bonds this year because of issuing these particular bonds. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you want to pose to me, but I would first like to turn things over to Tom Trotter at Buckingham-Doolittle. They are bond counsel on this financing and Tom can describe more of the details of the bond issue and then perhaps introduce the people from EMH.
Thank you, Kathy. Mr. Trotter, good morning.
Good morning. I'm Tom Trotter from Buckingham-Doolittle and Burrows. Actually, there's another Tom Trotter who's a very famous guy, but it's not me.
Does he wear a nice hat, too?
No, he doesn't. He's a very handsome man. With me today is Sean Valman, also from Buckingham-Doolittle and Burrows; Mike Subski, who is the Chief Financial Officer of EMH Regional Medical Center; Dave Cook, who is the Controller of the Medical Center; and Tom Goins, who is the Facilities Manager. The hearing is required by the federal tax law. We published notice of this hearing two weeks ago in the Lorain Journal, the Chronicle And the resolution you have before you is a resolution authorizing the issuance of the bonds. The resolution expressing conditional intent and authorizing the agreement to issue bonds was adopted by you on June 28. As you will recall, this project involves construction of a new addition to the existing facility, improvement of HVAC, and acquisition of equipment for the hospital facility. The hearing should be called to order and comments taken from the public. And then after the hearing, we would ask you to consider the resolution authorizing the issuance of the bonds.
Thank you. Mr. Ennis, would it be appropriate to respond to some of the questions that were raised last week before we take public testimony or not?
Whatever point you want to bring those up, we can.
Well, I think that we ought to advise the public of the responses that we have received from the various legal counsels representing this issue because there were some questions that were raised last week at the public session of our meeting about the availability of the county to insert prevailing wage on hospital bond issues of this type. And we were asked to provide some information and I believe that Mr. Ennis has that information acquired and I would like to have him make those comments if it's appropriate and if you have no objection at this point in time.
Objection.
Thank you.
Okay. There were two issues. One of them talked about inserting prevailing wages into the Catholic healthcare issue that we had last week and although that really doesn't concern this hearing, it's my understanding that those contracts have already been negotiated and some of the project is even being commenced. So certainly, to the extent, and in that project, it's total, so we would not be able to go backwards or retroactive to impose prevailing wages with respect to contracts that have already been negotiated and let. So the healthcare issue must remain as it is. With respect to this issue, I understand that there are at least, let me backtrack a little bit. Overall, as indicated, there are no federal state provisions that require prevailing wages to be implemented in these projects. It is within the discretion of the Commissioners whether they want to implement that kind of a policy into their project. It is my understanding that we have a policy that does not yet include that, so we would have to amend that policy in order to incorporate that requirement. With respect to this present project, again, I understand there are a number of contracts that have already been let. I understand there are many that have already been completed. We might be able to elicit some more detailed information from the presenters here, but they have indicated to me that they believe some of the work has done prevailing wages, even though it was not required. And it's my understanding that on some of the future projects that they have yet to be done, it is their belief that prevailing wages will be incorporated in many of most of those. And again, you maybe need to get more detailed information on that. So with respect to anything that's been let out, commenced, or already started, we can't go backwards and do those. If you want to initiate a new policy, you can do that with respect to future performance.
Thank you, Mr. Ennis. Kathy?
I wanted to talk about what the county's past practice and current policy have been because I know that there have been some questions about this and I think that there may be some misunderstanding about at least one of the projects that was done last year. The county issues revenue bonds under different statutory authority and really that fall into three categories. One is for industrial or economic development projects, another is for healthcare facilities, and another is for housing facilities. Sometimes when a particular facility, like a continuing care facility that you might think of as a type of healthcare facility, has an independent living component in it, that is done as a housing issue rather than, and it's done under a different section of the code, Section 133.51, rather than under Chapter 140, which is the statute for hospital facilities bonds. If you use that housing statute to finance assisted living or independent living facilities, that does bring into play a statutory prevailing wage requirement, which is somewhat different. It's called the residential prevailing wage requirement. And we did have a discussion about this at one of the public hearings last year with a question raised as to whether the particular facilities were residential facilities or commercial facilities. But I just wanted to clarify that that was not done under the hospital facilities bond statute and that's why prevailing wages were being required there. It was not being done because of an independent county policy, it was because of a statutory requirement. And it is, you know, at least as long as I have been involved, it has been the county's policy to simply follow the statutory requirements on prevailing wages.
Thank you, Kathy. Mr. Trotter, do you have anything further before we ask for public comment?
No, I do not. Although Tom Goins from the hospital is here, the Facilities Manager, and is available to answer any questions or talk about the existing contracts, the contracts that have already been let and entered into, some of which have been performed, and the contracts that are yet to be entered into for this project if anyone has any questions.
Thank you. Does anyone from the hospital wish to make a presentation or say anything or your attorney speaks for you?
Yeah, could I ask our attorney something?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay. You kept referring back to the state statute as our county policy, Kathy. Is there, I mean, you kept saying like our former policies and such. Can we make sure as a go-ahead basis that we have a prevailing policy so you can keep a heads up for us?
That is certainly something that the county has the power to do and we have some, last year, there were some policies that were formally adopted that simply reiterated the statutory requirements and, you know, if the county determines that this is what it wishes to do, it certainly has the power to do that. Lucas County does have that requirement. I don't know whether Cuyahoga County does or not.
And do we have to pass a resolution? Do you just need us today to say, "Hey, that's kind of what we're looking for in the future"?
I, in my own view, I would like, I should defer to Jerry on this, but I guess it would be my own assumption that you would do it by resolution or by adopting a set, you know, a revised set of policies.
Yeah, again, with respect to what Kathy called the residential or housing projects by law, that's already incorporated in there. With respect to these hospital projects, it is not required by law, it is not currently in our policy, and if you wish to implement it, you should make an amendment to that policy.
So basically, they're coming to us to use our binding authority and this is an opportunity for us to put some prevailing wages in, correct?
Right.
Okay, thanks.
I do have a question on that, though. If we would choose for future projects to make any kind of requirements, did not the Community Investment Corporation look through these recommendations and give them to the Commissioners when we adopted the requirements for bond since we kind of gave this?
My dealings on this have been with the Department of Development and with your CIC, so that is correct. They were the ones on an administrative level that I think brought the policies to the board. But, well, again, it's, ultimately, the board is the one who, I think, would approve or disapprove that type of a policy.
It may be then as far as the overall resolution, you maybe want to send it, do the reverse, send it back with a recommendation to the CIC policy that you would like to implement it and ask them if they have for their input on it so we could, for the long-term future basis, that might be the best way to do that.
Okay. Is it necessary to do that?
Well, if you want to have it as a long-term policy, I believe that's the way we have it set up, that the CIC reviews those and gets them back to us, so.
Okay.
Eventually, it's, you know, it's gonna come back to you and you can make that decision, but procedurally, we probably should get some input on a permanent policy from them before we implement it on a permanent basis. I don't think that would preclude you from doing it to what extent you could on the current project.
You will, as with the Catholic Healthcare Partners transaction involves a significant amount of refunding so that they are, these bonds would be refunding outstanding bonds for facilities that were built in the past. And so one thing you would want to consider is wording any sort of a policy since, you know, to be clear on how it would apply to those kinds of refunding situations.
So that's a different aspect of it because as I understand it, the healthcare partners issue is not part of what we're talking about.
I'm just giving that as an example. It is, you are more likely on a hospital issue than you are on a economic or industrial development issue to see refundings coming through here, refunding bonds for already completed facilities. And so I'm just saying.
Okay, so that needs to be addressed.
Yes.
What she's saying is there may be some projects in which they've already done it that still haven't been presented to us, so obviously you can't go back and ask for prevailing wages in a project that's already been completed.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Trotter, did you have anything further then?
I'm good.
Okay. All right, thank you. Since this is a public hearing then, it was duly advertised, is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak to the Board of Commissioners regarding this issue? Michael Sherman? Do you have to be sworn in, Jerry? I guess Jerry's thinking about whether we need to swear you in or not. We've never done that in this type of a public hearing before.
I think he's just making a comment.
Okay, thank you.
Michael Sherman, S-H-E-R-M-A-N, from Eden Township, lifelong resident in Lorain County. I'm the person they're talking about. I begged the questions at last month's meeting. I know we're not here to talk about Catholic Healthcare Partners, but we are talking about prevailing wage. As far as the Methodist Home Project and what went on over there, I have read both resolutions and both resolutions are being done under Chapter 140. And I fully understand, Kathy, that there is no statutory requirement for prevailing wage on 140 bond issue, but it is also not excluded. It's my understanding that if the public authority is just stated by Mr. Ennis, if the public authority wishes to implement it, then they certainly feel free to do so. My confusion came in the fact that Village Meadows and that job had already started and work had began, just the same way with Catholic Healthcare Partners. Many times, the resolution and the paperwork lags the start of the project. But here's where my confusion was and this is what begged my questions at the last meeting. Both resolutions state that for the purpose of providing for the health and welfare of the people of the state of Ohio by enhancing the availability, efficiency, economy of facilitating the financing of hospital facilities and independent living of facilities, and it goes on to talk about, the verbiage is the same with the exception of the word independent living facilities. So you're defining two projects that are both doing the same thing, financing of hospital facilities, be it extended care, be it residential nature, be it commercial. I also asked what the procedure in place was. I have not received a copy of that procedure. At this time, would like to request a copy of that procedure and when it was adopted. Also, when it comes to prevailing wage, and this is not a union, non-union issue, this is a community-based issue. We talked about what's going on regarding local preference policy, responsible bidder, keeping dollars in the community. The Commissioners, I applauded them at the last meeting for their proactive approach regarding local preference policy. The unions all have bona fide healthcare programs. They use the facilities of the hospital. It would be to their best interest to incorporate prevailing wage because it's not gonna cost them a dime extra. Prevailing wage laws were intended to level the playing field for all contractors by ensuring that workers would be fairly compensated for their labor. It also prevents unscrupulous contractors from bidding these projects one to two percent below and then paying their workers forty to fifty percent less, which substantially increases the profits for the contractor at the expense of the employees and more importantly, the taxpayers. Ohio's prevailing wage laws do not prevent any contractor from bidding or being awarded a state project or a public project. It only requires that the contractors pay the workers the wages that prevail in the area. Opponents of prevailing wage would lead us to believe that it costs extra dollars on public construction projects upwards of thirty-three percent extra to put in a prevailing wage requirement. This could not be further from the truth. Labor costs on these projects account for less than thirty percent of the total cost for public construction projects. Therefore, in order to save fifteen percent of the total construction cost, workers' wages and fringe benefits would have to be cut by fifty percent to save the thirty-three percent of the cost the workers would have to pay for the privilege of building these facilities. Ohio's Davis Bacon prevailing wage legislation was initially instituted in 1931 to prevent unqualified out-of-state contractors from lowballing bids and bringing in transient workers which would receive substandard wages and reside in transient areas. Politics should not be a factor in the fair treatment of workers regardless of whether they are represented by a union or not. The elimination of prevailing wages will only affect workers that are not covered by collective bargaining agreements. If your policy currently states that 140s do not require prevailing wage requirements, I strongly urge the Commissioners and lobby on behalf of the thirteen thousand building trades, organized individuals, and the tens of thousands of other workers who are not organized that you include this so that we can make this a community-based issue so that we can regenerate those tax dollars. If it's not in place, I encourage you to put it in place. Thank you for your time and your attention.
Thank you, Mr. Sherman. Other comments from the public? Apparently, there's no one else who wishes to make a statement or testify at this public Questions? Okay. Then I will declare the public hearing closed at this time. The issue before the Commissioners is a resolution expressing the conditional intent of the county to issue self-supporting hospital revenue bonds for EMH Regional Medical Center and authorize the execution of agreement to issue bonds in the amount of sixteen million dollars.
May I, excuse me, that's actually not the resolution. That's the resolution that was adopted on June 28.
Excuse me? Well, what is the resolution before us then?
A resolution authorizing the issuance of up to sixteen million dollars hospital facility revenue bonds, Series 2001, the EMH Regional Medical Center.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Trotter, for that clarification. So the resolution before us is that of authorizing this action.
I would move to authorize the action and also I'd move to have the CIC review and request they amend the county policy to all bond issues to incorporate prevailing wages and also to review the local preference and make sure that that's included. And the refund issue, Kathy, should we be looking at that at this time?
I think that's something that we discussed probably more efficiently.
Come to the microphone, please, Kathy.
I think it might be a good idea to separate those motions, Commissioners, so that we have one dealing with our long-term policy and let's get by this particular issue.
So exclude the refund issue.
It's a technical, it's a fairly technical point and one that I think can be handled with discussions at the administrative level of just, you know, how to fairly apply it to projects that have already been constructed.
Okay, so I would exclude the refund issue.
Well, I think Jerry's talking about what you said before.
Prevailing wage and local preference.
Well, as far as your motion to have the CIC review it for future, I would suggest that whole package be done as a separate resolution. Let's vote on this particular issue with EMH then.
Okay.
I wanted to help you. Let me make a suggestion. It's my understanding that they've already started the bidding process? Is my understanding?
Do you maybe want to have somebody clarify that a little bit?
We have. Tom Goins is the Facilities Manager for EMH Regional Medical Center and can address the status of contracts for this project.
Okay, so would it be appropriate then, since they've already started, maybe to amend a resolution to say that maybe fifty percent of this should be prevailing wages? Can we do that?
Let me clarify.
Okay.
I'm Tom Goins from EMH Medical Center. A lot of the monies that are being requested are for reimbursements of projects that have already been completed. And we believe that the majority, if not all, of those projects have been completed on the prevailing wage. However, they were not, that was not a requirement of those contracts that, again, are already concluded. The projects that are currently in progress, again, we believe that they are being performed under prevailing wage, but that was not a requirement of the contract. There's a large portion, or probably the largest project that we have, is our obstetrics edition. That will go out for bid in about two weeks. And certainly, if it's the desire of this body that we include a provision in that contract language that mandates prevailing wage, the hospital has no problem with that.
That's what I'm trying to do is figure out where you're at now so we can put the prevailing wages in now and then we can work on the issues with CIC and put in prevailing wages for the future without muddying up the resolution that we have now. So you're saying, how much money is this?
Currently, the project that's still, the project that's left on this issue is the obstetrics edition. That's an eight million dollar project. One and a half million dollars of that is for fixtures, furniture, and equipment. And about 1.5 million of that is structural steel, which has already been let. That's Phase One of the project. And again, it's our understanding that that contract is being performed under prevailing wage. The second half, which is the lion's share of that project, is the build-out, which incorporates all the additional trades, electrical, plumbing, mechanical. That bid package will go out in approximately two weeks. And again, the hospital would have no problem with mandating in that contract language that the contractors maintain prevailing wage rates.
So how can we ensure that? Should we have that in the motion?
So if we add to the motion, add to the motion the condition that the build-out phase of the obstetrics edition includes prevailing wages, will, that'll be okay?
Absolutely.
Okay, I would add that to the motion, that the build-out phase would be prevailing wage.
We'll start over with the motion then.
Okay. I moved to approve the bond issue and to include the build-out, that the build-out phase include prevailing wage.
For the obstetrics edition.
For the, okay.
Can we just limit that to the contracts to be entered into for the obstetrics?
Okay. Okay, so reword that.
I think then, and that's it then, right?
Yes.
We can discuss the CIC reviewing later, so it's not in the motion.
So the motion is?
Right, okay.
Finish this hearing and then you can make your motion.
Right. Motion is to authorize the bond with the build-out phase of the obstetrics to include the, with contracts not already let, to include prevailing wage. I'll second that motion.
Excuse me, what about the local preference?
Well.
It's always been the practice of EMH to utilize local contractors. We invite bidders that have previously performed well and that pretty much keeps people here in Lorain County.
You mentioned something about steel.
Yes.
Will the hospital be using domestic steel, do you know?
Yes, it is domestic steel.
That's good to hear. Thank you.
Is there any other further discussion on the motion before us which is approving the issue with the stipulations? Madam Clerk, you call the roll.
Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you for that part.
Thank you so much.
Now, I think that we want to give some direction to our CIC, Community Development Department, to review our requirements and to look at incorporating prevailing wage and local preference and anything else that we have discussed into the regulations and to come back with a report to us.
For future projects.
Yes, for future projects. Is that the intention of this board?
Well, my motion was to move to have the CIC review and request they amend the county policy on all bond issues to incorporate prevailing wage and to make sure that local preference is in there. I don't know, I'd like to also include domestic steel since a lot of these projects are new construction or renovation.
But we already have a domestic.
But that's for county projects, but maybe on the bond projects it might be.
Well, this is why I suggested that they look at all the other requirements and perhaps do a little.
Okay, I would like for them to look at.
Other counties are doing too, so maybe we can get a little heads up from them.
I would like for them to also review the use of domestic steel in the projects.
I think she's writing it all down.
And it's not limited to what we have talked about, so maybe there'll be somewhere a review from your department and then make a report back to us.
And how long would it take to get back to us, do you think? Two weeks?
I'm trying for two weeks.
Okay.
We don't have any other bond issues in the offing immediately, do we, Kathy?
Not that I'm aware of.
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Sherman?
If I may...
Would you come forward, please?
Yes.
I don't think we need a motion, do we?
No.
Michael Sherman, again, I again want to applaud and thank the commissioners, Lorain Memorial Hospital, Mr. Goins, their respective bond councils. You've taken a very proactive, community-support-based issue, and we're appreciative of that.
Thank you, Mr. Sherman. And then, the Community Development Department's going to come back with something for us.
So, we don't need a motion, then?
Well, I think we've asked our department to do that.
She has two weeks to do it?
Well, come on, give her a break. I mean, she may have other things to do too, as long as we don't have any other issue before us that these regulations would apply to, and if we're asking the CIC to look into it, they would have to schedule a meeting. So, I think there's a little bit of, you know, a little bit of homework needs to be done first before we implement a full policy.
I don't think we're implementing the policy. I would, I just moved that they review this.
Well, and I guess Commissioner Moore's suggesting that we don't have to have a motion. We have collectively directed our department to, in fact, do that.
Which is the same thing.
It could be a resolution, or it doesn't have to be, it doesn't matter.
So, it's your pleasure. Are we satisfied with the direction we've given to the department?
Yeah, I am.
Okay, all right. Then, we're...
And if they don't get back with us in two weeks, then we need a motion.
I don't think they're coming back in two weeks, is what I'm trying to relate to you, because the CIC is a part of this. And, yeah, please, use your stress relief. Thank you, okay? Madam Clerk, we'll move on then to the regular order business.
Don't you have to say you're staying for the day and starting over?
Oh, you want my staying for the day? Oh, thank you. Got it. The calendar, my calendar says for one day this past week. Hold on, hold fast, hold out. Patience is genius.
Screech your...
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Number one, job and family services bills?
So moved. Second?
Ms. Vacy?
Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Investments?
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Appropriations?
So moved. Second?
Discussion?
Okay.
Yeah, discussions.
Discussion?
Now, number six was left out, correct? It was, there was 13 pages, I believe, on appropriation? And number six was left out, correct?
Was withdrawn.
Okay, just want to make sure.
There was a note on there that said it was held out. You just wanted us to know you were reading it.
I know. That's what makes sure. Okay.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Transfers?
So moved.
Support?
Discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Advances?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Requisitions?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Travel expenses?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Bills?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
I don't believe there was any personal action this week.
Yes, there was a sheet.
There was sheet?
There are two items on it. I'll move for approval.
The one?
Second.
Okay. Okay.
Discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Award the following contract for various county engineers' project: A, Crossroads Asphalt Recycling Columbia Station, Ohio, in the amount of $176,550 for the County Engineers 2001 Hot Applied Crack Seal Program. The estimate was $176,550, and this was the lowest and most responsive bid received complying with specifications. B, Coasing Construction Company Fredericks Town, Ohio, in the amount of $107,440 for the Baumhart Road Paved Burn Project, estimate $122,452. This was the lowest and most responsive bid received complying with specifications, and the county engineer has reviewed the bill of projects and recommends approval.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Authorize two commissioners to execute the state drawdown 132 for FY 98 CDBG Formula Grant. Lorain County was allocated $461,000 for the projects which are now completed, and the drawdown was $64,954.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Authorize Lorain County Solid Waste Management District to make solid waste recycling composting grant program available to all Lorain County communities for the year 2002. This grant program is designed to provide local communities with grant funds to establish and develop cooperative projects to enhance and increase recycling, waste minimization, and composting within Lorain County. This project is designed to meet the requirements in Lorain County Solid Waste Plan, and the district is striving to exceed the 25% residential waste reduction recycling goal.
Mr. Bellman, would you like to make a few comments on this for the benefit of the audience and the board?
Dan Bellman, B-I-L-L-M-A-N, I'm the Solid Waste Director. This grant is a yearly grant that we give out to the communities to do functions within the community, such as Blue Bag, the Blue Bag Program. We do educational seminars with the money. We do have some giveaways. They can buy recycling equipment. They can use it for their drop-off facilities. Some townships have drop-off facilities, so they fund those projects that way. We also encourage them to do educational things with the schools and their districts, programs to assist senior citizens, and so on and so forth. It's a program that's been in existence since about 1993. It's in the plan. Originally, the plan stated that we would allocate about $940,000. At this point in time, with the new census figures, it's going to be around 1.2 million. You have any particular questions?
Is that annually? Are you talking about annually? That's the grant that's going to be allocated?
Right, we do this every year.
So, 1.2 million this year, because of the census?
1.2 million this year. We have, we've actually given out more in years past, but as revenues, revenues right now come out of the tipping fees are about $63,000, under what they were last year. Not saying that they might not increase in the coming months, but at this time, we're looking at less money coming out of the tipping fees than we had last year.
Dan, can you explain a little bit on how the department is funded, and how these programs are funded? Actually, the tipping fees are the funds that are provided to the Solid Waste Department.
Tipping fees are fees that are paid by BFI for every ton of refuse that goes into the landfill. We're on a two-tiered system. Everybody in Lorain County that puts refuse in the landfill, that generates $2 a ton within the county. Outside the county, the tipping fee is $4 a ton. And generally, the tipping fees outside the county are far more in revenue than are in county.
And also, we have far more out-of-county waste that is coming into Lorain County, too.
Well, yeah, the figures are, if you look at the amount of dollars generated, it generates probably twice as much money, but pretty much, the tonnage is pretty close. I can give you some figures here.
Is that fee mandated, or did you just?
No, it's mandated.
Excuse me?
Is that fee mandated, the $4, or did you guys just?
Right, it's in the plan.
I know, but you guys are redoing the plan this year. Is there a way that you can increase the out-of-county funding? That's on me?
We're at the max right now. Unless we went into another fee structure, we went into another fee structure, yes, you probably could.
Can you guys look at that for the, because you guys are discussing redoing the plan this year, correct?
Right.
Okay. Just if people are coming into their, coming into our county dumping, I'd like to make a little bit more money if we could.
Well, actually, it's a standard fee that's been set up by the EPA.
EPA did that, okay.
And it was voted on and approved by the Policy Committee many years back, and it hasn't been changed. To give you some idea, on the tonnages, for 2001 up till May, the tons that county residents put into landfills, 123,475 tons. The tons that are coming in from out-of-county are 154,560.
Yeah, I thought it was more coming in from out-of-county than there was in county.
Yes, but that benefits the residents of this county, because it's a generation of dollars that we receive. So, that helps fund some of our programs within the county.
In one way, and the other way, it's more garbage in our backyards.
Well, I think we're very fortunate to have a company such as BFI and a landfill in our county. Otherwise, we'd be paying a lot more, the residents would be paying a lot more than what we are right now.
We would be paying the $4 a ton per tipping fees.
And possibly more.
Possibly. Okay, thanks, Dan.
So, there's a possible to charge more, then, correct?
Excuse me?
There is a possibility to charge more.
Yeah, we, if the Policy Committee would go to another program.
Okay. I'm just dropping hints.
At this point in time, I think that we have a very good system, works very well, and I don't know whether we'd want to change it, but we can have that discussion, that's for sure.
And if the Policy Committee would make a suggestion, then that has to be, there's a process, follow-through with what the process is.
Right.
Well, tell us what the process is. It has to be...
You mean, as far as getting the change?
Changing the plan, yes.
Well, Policy Committee would bring it up, research it, as far as what it would bring in, they would put it into the revised plan. The plan would go out to all the communities, and everybody would have to sign off on the completed plan, all communities, including the townships and the cities.
So, in other words, it has to be approved by those entities?
That is correct. That is, by the communities, okay?
Yes.
It doesn't have to be approved by out-of-county entities.
But by the political subdivisions in Lorain County. If there's a change made to the plan, it has to be approved by them.
Right, and it's also got to be approved by the Board of Commissioners.
Yes, okay.
Dan, doesn't the state set those tipping fees?
Excuse me?
Doesn't the state set the tipping fees?
Right, they also would set the other fees, also the maximums that we could go.
I thought the max was two and four.
It is at this point in time, the way we're set up, with a Tier 1 and a Tier 2. If you went to flow control, something like that, I think that you could probably charge upwards of $5 a ton, but then we would also charge the residents $5 a ton also.
We don't need that.
Thanks, Dan.
That's why I think the Policy Committee made that decision years back, to alleviate charging the communities more than what they are right now with the tier fee.
Okay, what is the pleasure of the board on item number 12?
I would move. Move to approve.
Are you going to second?
Would you like me to second?
Sure, why not?
Okay, I'll second.
All right.
More discussion? Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye. Thank you, Dan.
Authorize the salary increase for Stephen Bancek, Lorain Municipal Court Clerk, effective retroactive to January 1, 2001. By weekly rate, will increase from $881.05 to $907.48. This amount is to be paid retroactive at $26.43 for the 14 back pay periods. The new annual salary is $23,594.40 and reflects the county's 2/5 share.
And Mr. Innis has reviewed this?
Yes, Commissioner. Originally, I had some concern, and after checking it out, I found that the legislation authorizing this was passed prior to the commencement of Mr. Bancek's term, so that it would be proper to implement.
So, this is not an increase in his...
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. I'll still move.
Second? Discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Issue notice to proceed letter to Lytel Construction Incorporated, Worcester, Ohio, for the Burzley Road or Orphanage Road Railroad at grade crossing elimination effective July 23, 2001.
So moved.
Support? Discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Authorize the upgrade of circuitry of the warning devices by PUCO for the North Fork Southern Grade Crossing, CR 53 West Ridge Road. The county agrees to place all advanced warning signs and payment markings on the approaches to the grade crossings in conformation with Ohio Manual of Uniform Traffic Control Devices, as well as installation of curving if necessary.
I'll still move.
Now, second?
Discussion?
Yes. We're, we're, I don't understand this, what are we authorizing them, just upgrading? And are we, are we paying for this, too? Because it says that we're authorizing it, Dan.
Teresa, if you could pull out file number 15. There is, I think their program of work in all the grade crossings that they're going to be working on, and I believe this is their authorization that they need to proceed.
So, they need ROK to work on the...
Well, and the engineer has...
I didn't say anything.
That came from the engineer's office.
I think what we're doing, Commissioner, is when they do this work, we're responsible for putting the necessary warning signs about, you know, construction ahead and all that sort of stuff.
Okay, okay.
So, those, that's our road area, so they want assurance that we will put the signage and everything that, on our roads, that we need to do, so they can go forward with the projects.
Oh, is this the actual resolution that's in here, or the one that we're passing? This has all the...
I think it's... What we pass will be based on this, I believe.
On this? Okay, because that's the shorter. Okay. No cost improvements on the road, so, okay. Okay, thanks. Basically, we're just in charge of safety.
Madam Clerk?
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Thanks.
Amend Resolution Number 01451, adopted May 10, 2001, authorizing mullin construction Overland, Ohio, and J.O. Riker, Elary, Ohio, to connect the Amherst Township Sanitary Sewer in the total of $32,260. This amendment reflects the addition of language stating that this action was due on an emergency basis, the quotes received were above the 15,000 limit, or in seeking sealed bids would be required.
And the amendment is to add the emergency basis, giving a reason why we did this in the fashion that we did. I'll still move. I'll still move.
I'll second.
Discussion?
Yes, I have a question, will this conclude the Amherst Sewer issue? Mr. Ballard, do you know?
I do not know, I can't answer that.
John, do you know?
I don't know if this is the final action or not. Fiscally, we have the money in place, yet the remaining housing, but I don't know if this is the end of the action, to use that money.
This is a two-month-old amendment.
I believe it's the last thing that the county has to do, there's, there's some tie-in work that the city has to do, yeah.
We originally passed this resolution in May, so this is a clarification on that, I think it's more a bookkeeping thing on our part and with respect to this issue.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Allocate funds not to exceed sixty thousand dollars to the Lorraine County Historical Society to assist in the county's participation in the bicentennial, as permitted by Ohio Revised Code, Section three oh seven point two-three. The Commissioners will be taking an active approach to come out and write our history and should join the Historical Society to accomplish this task.
Um, Commissioners, I asked this to be placed on the agenda this morning, and, um, there are a couple representatives from the Historical Society in the audience. In May, they sent a request to us, and I thought it might be healthy for us to have a little discussion on this issue. And, uh, I did send you a memo detailing how I got to where I got to, and Commissioner Vacy has also responded with some questions. So if you don't mind, I would like to ask Bill Byrd, who is the Executive Director, and George Strom, who is President of the Lorraine County Historical Society, to, uh, talk to us. And, and Bill, identify yourself for the camera, please.
Okay. Bill Byrd, B-I-R-D, Executive Director of the Lorraine County Historical Society. Very pleased to be here today. Do you want me to address the, uh, the proposal?
Please do.
Okay, great. We are in the process of, uh, of doing things as the Lorraine County Historical Society to try and coordinate various efforts among different historical groups in the county. Uh, one phase of this is the preparation for a very large bicentennial project. We are planning to partner with the Lorraine County Metro Park, and have an exhibit reflective of the entire county's history during the year two thousand and three. This exhibit would be open approximately from the middle of April into June, and would draw literally thousands of visitors. It would be a major undertaking. This would have a permanent exhibit during that time in the Ewing Auditorium, and would also have individual slots during the weeks that it's open for spotlights on specific communities, where there would be additional programming in the evening, speakers could be present, uh, coverage spotlighting specific communities during that time. There are plans to try and create a video to go along with this. We need additional display cases that the Metro Parks doesn't have, we need money to, to facilitate some of the speakers and that type of thing. Uh, in addition to that, we have recently met with the Preservation Resource Center of Northeastern Ohio. This is a branch of the Cleveland Restoration Society, and it was established at a breakfast meeting in May that there could be a much better coordination of preservation issues throughout the county if there was a countywide focus. And the Lorraine County Historical Society has volunteered to create a preservation committee, to work with the, uh, major historical groups that are involved in restoration and the Main Street groups, and we have plans to create such a committee. We're hopeful of hiring, uh, part-time staff that could deal specifically with this, that would have some special training, and that's also part of our proposal. In addition to that, we know that the individual historical societies maintain, uh, cultural resources throughout the county and, uh, provide economic, uh, resources to visitors and payroll and what have you, and, uh, we have plans to help support the other societies through, uh, individual grants to, to help them with their projects. So those are our major components of the proposal.
Thank you, uh, Bill, and, um, I guess that I did forward some information to our Community Development Department on the historic aspect of that, and Ron Twining had responded, and I supplied copies of that to the Commissioners, that their department would be willing and able to work on this. And, um, Ron relayed that we have a report preserving our past that was created in nineteen seventy-seven, and that could be a start-off point then to work forward. And you mentioned the committee, he also has some people who are interested and willing to help on this committee, and we could probably provide some support staff through our Community Development Department to do this aspect of it.
Uh, yes, and, and we're concerned that, uh, you know, as this report is updated, that it be done so that it meets the state and federal standards, and therefore is a useful tool. And, uh, especially with the help of the Preservation Resource Center, we think that we can not only help with the inventory, but probably, uh, provide a professional assistance in, in terms of, uh, doing the right kind of inventory that would benefit the county.
Yeah, and I think that, um, it's a worthwhile request, and, uh, I'm, I appreciate Commissioner Vacy. I, I also threw in the bicentennial flag, because that's part of what the County Commissioners Association has asked us to, uh, work on, and I lumped it all together, and Commissioner Vacy very aptly pointed out that we have already adopted a county flag. I didn't suggest that we do away with that, but I thought perhaps we could up, upgrade it a little bit and have a little bit finer product to send down to Columbus, so, um, I, do you have questions?
Uh, yeah, I do. Uh, will there be any other funding available? What other funding will you be, uh, or will there be any other contributors? I mean, it's not just the county?
Uh, in terms of the bicentennial project?
Yes.
Yes, uh, well, initially, of course, the Metro Parks is contributing, uh, staff and facility to this, and, uh, I would be seeking out, uh, grants from private foundations along with this. The bicentennial is only one component of, of the request.
Do we want to ask Mr. Twining to meet with, uh, Mr. Byrd and, and bring back a, a more formulated proposal to us? Or do we want to allocate it a dollar amount, or what is the pleasure of the board?
I would like to see an itemized list of what this funding is going to be used for. I mean, I just hate to say here sixty thousand dollars, use it at your discretion, which I'm sure you use it properly, but I would still like to see one.
Mr. Strom, did you have some comments that you wanted to make to the board? Welcome, good morning.
Yes. George Strom, President of the Board of Justices, Lorraine County Historical Society. The sixty thousand dollars, um, is the amount mandated by state, uh, resolution that can support county historical societies. We have not come to Lorraine County for any support for years and years. Lorraine County Historical Society was founded in eighteen eighty-nine, and the first museum, uh, rooms were in, what at that time was the New County Courthouse. Over the years, we have on and off received funding support from the county. I used to, I've been an officer since I was nineteen years old, and I'm sixty now, so I've been around a while. But, uh, on a regular basis, we, we, uh, approach the county commissioners for help and, and support. During the real, uh, some dismal budgetary days, uh, this, everything was cut out, including sheriff's deputies and everything else. So we finally, uh, we were able to survive with private funding. In answer to the question about private funding, we constantly are seeking private funding for all of our programs. We, we maintain a, a, a small endowment fund which really supports our efforts. But all of these local groups around the county do heroic efforts on practically starvation, uh, financial basis. And, um, we feel that most of the counties in the state have a regular support base from the county commissioners. We do not, and to do the job that we, uh, to really expand and do the job that we feel we, we must do, especially in this bicentennial year, and with this, uh, uh, inventory of historic properties, which is, which is a very important thing, which the Commissioners have already embarked on. But, uh, we feel that we just have to have some support. Our, our budget is that the, uh, is, is as lean as it can be. And we're constantly selling hot dogs and everything else to try to survive, so...
Oh, now's a good time for you get unplugging about your ice cream social.
Yes, by the way, the ice cream social will be, uh, Sunday, antique cars and, and, uh, uh, ice cream, hot dogs, down at the Higories', and we implore you to all come. It's very, it's very reasonable, five dollars gets you in. But, uh, the other issue that we are in, that we have in the planning stages right now, is the creation of a Lorraine County History Center, and we're going to try to do this through private funding, offering space in, in, in this facility to each one of the local county groups. That's on our, on our wish list, and we, we feel that it's going to, going to happen. So we're, we're very active, and we, we really, we really need this support.
Thank you, Mr. Strom. I would just like to comment that, uh, the code does provide up to sixty thousand dollars, but it's not mandatory. It's discretionary.
They haven't, they haven't asked for it in...
I, they have not asked since I've been here, and, uh...
They haven't asked for it, but yet, we do have things in the Historic Society. Our flag, uh, we have certification that the flag was accepted by the society, and also being the first woman county commissioner, I have things that were accepted by the Historical Society. So I definitely appreciate the work that, uh, that you do.
Just might add, the bell downstairs was saved by the Lorraine County Historical Society, the bell from the original courthouse. Things like that go on all the time, and many times go unnoticed. But, uh, when this building was dedicated, I gave the dedication speech. So there, there is, there is, there's different aspects that, that we play in Lorraine County life that I think it would be a lot poorer if we didn't have, the combined historical societies weren't there.
I have a brick also in my office from the old jail that was across the street here. If you're interested in it, I'd, I'd be willing to give it to you.
Yeah, people don't understand how po- how important this type of activity is. I'm a strong supporter of the societies, the Historical Societies. When I moved here in nineteen ninety, um, it was within the first two weeks, I had an ice cream social and I showed up, and they had that barber, they had a barber shop quartet, and I'm like, man, this is home, and that, and that was it. And then I, and I lived here, and I've been here since, and so, um, and people don't realize how important little things like that, an ice cream social to bring people together, just, you know, people may think, ah, it's corny, but you know what? It, it made my decision to stay here.
It connects people.
It does, you know.
And it gives a, it gives a, uh, you know, especially when, where you have a population that, that many times has been mobile, it gives them a connection to their past in this area that we think is very important. Our, our big focus is on education. We take thousands of schoolchildren through our museums, and virtually with no support from any area.
Right, well, I, yeah, I was a member of the, of a Historical Society, and I know how lean and mean it is. We spent an hour and a half talking about nine dollars once, and I just... I was that close from throwing it on the table, just to get me out of there.
That's not unusual.
I know it's not, so I know how lean you are, so, um, I'm, I'm a strong supporter. The fact that they haven't asked for money since seventy-five, in twenty-six years, and the bicentennial, I remember the seventy-six bicentennial for our country, I, I mean, as a, as a kid, I participated and enjoyed it, and it was lean times in seventy-six. The, you know, the administration, on a national basis, has taken some hits for participating. But I think you have to participate to get young and old all involved, and that's why, to me, sixty thousand dollars to, as long as it's used for the bicentennial, it looks like that's what it's earmarked for, correct?
For the bicentennial, and, and for this Preservation Committee to a certain degree. And, uh, as much as is gonna be needed for the bicentennial, we've got cost estimates, but we, uh, and then for some special, support for some of the five oh one C-three, uh, Historical Societies around the county that need help for just small, small grants for, for certain projects.
Now, are you gonna come again next year for the bicentennial then, or, because, you know, it's two thousand and three, so...
Well, we're probably, we're probably gonna ask to be on a recurring, uh, appropriations list, but not, um... We need the money, let's put it that way. We always were on a, on a, on, on, on the appropriations list. Sometimes it was for very small appropriations, uh, but we, uh, prior to seventy-five, we were, and then we just, uh, we hadn't, we haven't asked anything, like you say, in twenty-six years.
Would it be appropriate to allocate a portion of this money and then work with you on a continuing basis through our Community Development Department, would that be acceptable?
What's your idea?
Anything would be acceptable, we, we just, we're, we need help.
Well, I, I was thinking in terms of approximately twenty thousand for the bicentennial and twenty-five thousand for the historical portion, because I feel there's some things our Community Development Department can do to help you. So at this time, I would be interested in allocating forty-five thousand dollars to them, and then I think we just need to continue to work together.
You have some?
Oh, well, I, I was just gonna say that, uh, you know, a lot of the thrust here is, is not just for our work, but to help the other societies as well. And so, uh, you know, the code provides that literally the Commissioners can support the county society, but there are societies in Overland, Amherst, Lorraine, et cetera, and, uh, the lion's share of our proposal is activities that would benefit everybody and not just the county society. I, I thought that that was, uh...
Well, and that, that's certainly legitimate, because those individual societies have done an awful lot, and they, and you together, especially on the hundred-seventy-fifth anniversary that we had, I learned a whole lot about our county on the displays that were at the Community College that day, and, uh, they, they do a lot, there's no doubt about that.
So how do we ensure that it goes, like, percentages go to bicentennial? What do we do with this, I mean, if that's...
I think Betty mentioned twenty-five thousand for bicentennial, and the balance to be shared between, uh, the other Historical Societies.
Well, no, that wasn't really what I suggested. I suggested twenty thousand for the bicentennial and twenty-five thousand for the historical piece, and I didn't include the last part, so I'm... I guess they're asking for the full amount.
Right, but they're also asking for preservation too, correct?
That's all to be included in the sixty thousand.
Right.
The twenty-five thousand, Betty, was for the Preservation Committee or was for the other groups?
I, I was just talking, but I thought it was for the preservation component.
Okay.
Uh, I didn't include the other groups, so perhaps you wanna give any consideration?
Well, then if we could go, I mean, if we go another fifteen thousand, use as a grant for the other groups to help participate and match if they want to participate in the bicentennial, that's another way to generate some more... I mean, is that what they're looking for, the other groups? I mean, I know what they're, they're probably looking for just operational costs, like pay for stamps, but, uh...
But we wanna be very specific in what we support.
Right, and I don't know where we're getting this, I don't think we're getting the specifics right now, though, are we?
No, it was a general request, so how, how do we wanna proceed? Do we want to, uh, pass a motion of intent based on further information, or do you wanna allocate a dollar amount, how you wanna go?
I'm happy with the sixty, but that's...
I would like to, to pa- to move, uh, for a motion of intent, and then come back with some information in regards to how you feel the money should be allocated.
Would that be agreeable?
Give us a list.
Because your, your proposal was in May, and it was, it was general.
Okay, well, I think that, uh, we were hoping to provide possibly up to half of the money to the, uh, to the local groups.
Okay.
And, uh, we were intending to carve up the other half among, uh, the preservation and the bicentennial and, and our operation as we work on these projects, so that was the, uh, the intent. But, uh, we need funding, like George said, and we're more than happy to operate with the amount that you would establish, and be very, very appreciative.
So they're gonna go, so they're gonna go twenty, probably half with, uh, for themselves and half throughout the county, and we just weren't putting any strings attached then on the bicentennial aspect of it. That's what it sounds like, what they're asking for. That's what you're asking for, correct?
You could designate any amount for the bicentennial.
No, no, I'm just saying, I'm trying to repeat what you just said, okay?
Yes, exactly, right.
So I have it clear.
I'd like to see something in writing in regards to the spending and, and set a camp on what we're going to contribute.
Okay, so it sounds like we have an intent to support, we just don't know how much and what for. Could you guys get us what for, and then the three of us can decide how much? I think that's where we're at.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Is that, I mean, I think you see that there's some positive, you know, it's positive ways going back, you know? I'll just say, but I think there's a, a good intention here. Is that agreeable?
No, that's agreeable with me, if it's agreeable with you. I think we needed to open the discussion publicly, and I want to thank you for coming today and doing that, and then you can just tell the people at the ice cream social on Sunday that you're gonna get something.
Could you guys have it ready for next Thursday's meeting?
Yes.
Yes, that's...
Can we have it on the agenda for next Thursday? Thanks.
Thank you, great.
Thank you. Ma'am Clerk, item number eighteen.
Authorize the filing a Help Me Grow grant with the Ohio Department of Health for two hundred and sixty-four thousand three hundred and thirty-six dollars federal funding to provide early intervention services to developmental disabled children between the ages of zero to three. The early intervention is part of the new Help Me Grow initiative, and grant is effective April, excuse me, October first, two thousand and one to September thirty, two thousand and two, and authorize the president to execute on behalf of the board. And there's also a Part A to this, which is approve and enter into the Help Me Grow subsidy grant agreement with the Ohio Department of Health for Children Family First Council in the amount of two hundred and ninety thousand six hundred and forty dollars, effective retroactive to July first, two thousand and one, to June thirty, two thousand and two, and authorize the president to execute.
Thank you, and Mr. Juan Molina Crespo is here this morning, he can just briefly advise the Commissioners...
He can just briefly advise the commissioners what this is about and it includes the two grants, Juan, the one that you're getting signatures from from yesterday. I believe that needs to be reauthorized, so I thought we could put them together.
Good morning. Thank you, commissioners. Yes, the, where would you like me to begin?
Any place you want. The one that's on the agenda is the Help Me Grow grant and the other one is the subsidy.
The Help Me Grow grant, this is the first year that the council will be receiving these federal monies, Part C. They have been coming to Lorain County for the past twelve years or so through another grantee. Given the state's changes and the new state mandates, they now require that the early intervention dollars flow through the county council. This will be happening statewide. The dollars, as it's indicated in the agenda, will be specifically to provide services to developmentally disabled children between the ages of zero and three. This will be done through a service coordination component with vendors that we have worked with in the past. We hope also to expand that to include new vendors for the provision of service coordination.
Okay.
The.
And just tell us a little bit about the subsidy grant.
The subsidy, the subsidy agreement is a new manner in which the state has been, will now channel GRF dollars to the county councils, the general revenue dollars. Previous to this year, what we had to do was submit a plan, which was basically a scaled down proposal on how we anticipated using those dollars. Now, what the state is saying, we will combine two previous programs that we have had, the Welcome Home program, which was a newborn visitation program, and Early Start, which was a visitation program for young children. And they've combined those two and they're calling it now the subsidy agreement. And that was mailed to the state, I believe on June thirteenth. So, those are the two components of the Help Me Grow initiative. There is a third component where the bulk of the dollars for this initiative comes and that's the ten of dollars and that's approximately nine-hundred-and-sixty thousand dollars that we will be eligible to draw down for the state for the Help Me Grow initiative.
Okay. And do we need approval for that subsidy grant too? I added that this morning. That was the document that you had yesterday and I think it was an agreement and I thought it needed to be officially approved. And I thought if we see Help Me Grow grant this week and then next week we see a subsidy, we may be confused, so I thought we could do it all at once.
I appreciate that, yes, Commissioner.
All right. Do we need separate motions for these or separate motions? Okay, then I'll move to approve item number eighteen, the Help Me Grow grant that's effective October first through September thirtieth, as appears on the agenda.
Discussion, Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
And then I'll also approve, I'll move to approve the Help Me Grow grant subsidy, which does not appear on the agenda, but which is in the amount of two-hundred-and-ninety-thousand-six-hundred-and-forty dollars and is effective seven-one-oh-one to six-thirty-oh-two.
That would be eighteen A, correct?
Yes.
Discussion, Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Page one.
Page one.
Award contract to David Williams and Associates Incorporated Alliance Ohio in the amount of twenty-five thousand four-hundred-and-seven dollars for the city of Rowland's Deep Hope Park Playground Equipment, a CDBG-FY-two-thousand-funded project. The allotted CDBG amount for this activity is twenty-nine thousand eight-hundred dollars. This was the only bid received for the activity. CDBG funds are federally funded, Chapter Twelve of the Police Manual, excuse me, it should be Policy Manual, on the procurement specifically prohibits local preference bidding practices. The community development department has reviewed and recommends approval.
I'll move.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Approve an enter into agreement between the commissioners on behalf of Lorain County Sheriff and Evercom Systems Incorporated Irving, Texas, to provide inmate telephone service. Present contract expires July third, two thousand and one. The county has received a commission of sixty percent of the net profit from Evercom Systems Incorporated, which money goes into the general fund. This renewal agreement is for a four-year period commencing retroactive to July third, two thousand and one through July third, two thousand and five. The new contract will provide for a commission of forty-three percent of the gross revenue billed, which the county will realize an increase of approximately two thousand dollars a month over what is being received now into the general fund. Evercom will also provide the sheriff's office with much-needed equipment such as portable radios and batteries, law books, tools, crime scene equipment, et cetera, not to exceed forty-five thousand upon approval of this contract. With the purchase of this equipment, that decrease the cost to the jail operations money and the general fund and authorize the president to execute on behalf of the board.
Sheriff Stemedy, would you like to comment on this? Good morning.
Good morning, everyone. Phil Stemedy, Lorain County Sheriff. Usually the commissioners, I'm coming to you, ask for the money for the sheriff's office. I'm not today. There's no cost to the county for this program. We've had this contract since nineteen ninety and we renewed it nineteen ninety-four and at that point, they bought a video imaging system for the jail, which we presently still use to photograph the inmates when they come out. And that was a thirty thousand dollar cost that didn't cost the county anything for that. Obviously, this is a service provided to the inmates that does not have to be provided, but you know, obviously, you want to have some type of phone communications for them. But, I liken it to like, if you have a family member in the military or somebody out of college, if you make calls and you make long-distance calls, that those people have to pay for those calls, so even the inmates should have to pay for them also. That is, money does generate money and it comes back to the county general fund. So, I'm asking the commissioners to approve this today. If there's any other questions.
Thank you, Sheriff. Questions from the board?
So, how's this work? They can, it's like a collect call to the.
That's correct. You pick the phone up. When they're out in the pot areas, they're allowed to use the telephones and you get a tree like, you know, you dial the number and then the person on the other end of the phone can accept the call or not accept it. There is a twenty-minute limit on the call. For a local call, it costs two dollars and eighty-five cents and they can talk for twenty minutes.
So, there's, do they, so they do have ways of, they can't use eight-hundred numbers or other numbers such as?
That's correct.
Okay.
It's a good system and most of the sheriff's offices throughout the county use it.
Okay, well, I just want to make sure that, I don't want to come back and I'm sorry.
No, we don't allow them to do that. We can block out numbers on the system. It really is a good system.
Okay, and there's, okay, and these are private phone calls? These are not listened or?
That's correct.
Okay.
Other questions? What would you say? What was your question?
No, I just said, these are private phone calls. They are not tapped or listened to.
Yeah, they are tapped.
No, they're not. They're not taped.
They're not taped.
We can tell what number they call, but we do not tape those.
You don't know what's been said?
When they call out, though, doesn't it say that this could be monitored?
My Lieutenant Jack Ham is here from Obracius. He says like a standard morning, but we can tell the number they dial, because sometimes that does matter in a court case, in case we need something to that word.
Right.
Because sometimes these inmates that are in them will try to call the victims and we can block those phone numbers out.
And then they can, they don't have to accept the call either then? They're not really on the phone, the operators?
That's correct.
Okay. So, make sure there's, you know.
Other questions? If not, I'll move for approval.
A second.
Discussion, Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Authorize the allocation not to exceed fifteen thousand dollars to the Huntington Township trustees to complete their community recreation complex improvement project. The township passed purchase additional adjoining land to be used for regulation-sized ball field, soccer field, and picnic area. The bleachers contain fifty to sixty percent recycled aluminum, the planter boxes contain recycled sand, and the parking stops and fence guards are eighty percent recycled plastic.
Would we like Mary Beth to address us? Mary Beth Derikito, trustee from Huntington Township.
Thank you, commissioners. The project that we're working now is to upgrade our original complex area. This area was originally, as I'm sure you know, a school, which is, it was built in nineteen eleven and closed in nineteen seventy-six. It has since that time been a township complex. There is a ball field, which is not a regulation-sized ball field. We are asking for the bleachers for that area. We want to start using this for T-ball. It is used a good part of the year just for general recreation, not necessarily scheduled ball games. We have asked for a total of fifteen thousand three-hundred-seventy-five dollars for the two sets of bleachers, fence guards to go on the fence, which has been up there for many years and really does need some protection at the top of the fence, a bike rack, and a planter designed to go under the fire escape that we now have. We want this to improve a very unattractive area and also to serve as a traffic barrier, because it is not really a good area for people to run back and forth through. The ground is uneven there. There are things to trip over and we want to discourage that. We have also asked for parking stops to replace what we are currently using, which are punchable electric poles, and they are not attractive either. Mr. Billman has just discussed the possibility or the necessity of having some sort of match for this. He has pointed out that other cities that have gotten rather large grants have used their installation costs as part of their match. In our case, I estimate it would cost us about thirty-five hundred dollars to have our employees install this equipment and we would probably have another thousand dollars in materials for it. This is a really worthwhile project, I think. The community gets a lot of use out of this area. We have found lately that we have a group of people, elderly gentlemen who come on Friday evenings and play their violins. We have another group, I'm not even sure where they're from, but they're in a pigeon, holding pigeon club and they come down and release their pigeons. I did have some pictures there of the equipment we have. As you can see, it's very, very outdated. It really needs to be replaced. It's unsafe. We're concerned about the liability and we do need to do something with this. Also, I hope that you're aware that we have purchased eleven acres to the south of this complex. There's nothing we can do with that land at this point, because the crops are on it and they will have to be harvested before we can do anything with it. However, in the future, we will be putting a regulation-sized ball field in there, probably a soccer field, a walking path, and more picnic tables. So, we think this is going to be a wonderful addition to the community. These funds would help us tremendously now and we hope that you will give us a favorable response to this.
Thank you, Mary Beth. Some of the pictures, in fact, depict what you're talking about, but the pictures at the end show what a wonderful job you've done and using that facility and then the planters that you've got in the picnic area, so.
And we have used monies from our solid waste grant to buy a lot of that, of those materials. Our four H clubs have kept the planters planted and it's been a wonderful community effort.
Thank you. Mr. Billman, do you have a recommendation for the board regarding this?
Just, Commissioner, I have no objection to the thirteen thousand three-hundred-seventy-five. I wanted to ask Mary Beth a question that I forgot to ask her before. In your original request, it recycled sand. Were you getting sand for?
Oh, originally, we were having trouble finding a planter box made from recycled plastic and the only thing we've been able to find was one made from concrete and that had recycled sand. But we felt recycled plastic was much more appropriate.
Yes, I do too. Thank you.
Oh, we won't talk about that. Okay, so the request before the Board of Commissioners is for thirteen thousand three-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars. What is your pleasure?
So move.
I'll second.
Further discussion? Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
That was reduced from the fifteen thousand, correct?
Yes.
The fifteen thousand we thought was a max.
Your five.
Oh, do you have the cost on these items?
Yes, present invoice.
From a well sales incorporated.
Local too. I like that.
And we can fund fifty and sixty percent recycled products?
It's yearly, Commissioner.
I'm seeing that some of these are fifty to sixty percent recycled products.
That's correct.
As long as they have some recycled goods in them, they can be funded through solid waste.
We generally like to see fifty, sixty percent and with most of the stuff here, or like the bike rack, that's one hundred percent. Some items can't be made, one hundred percent recycled. If they are, then the cost is pretty hilly, you know, buying the item, so.
Okay.
A lot of times, like the, like the bleachers, you're gonna find that the, part of it is going to be steel supports rather than aluminum supports, because aluminum supports would have to be a lot thicker, more rigidly, and the cost would drive, you know, the cost would be driven up to where we couldn't afford bleachers. And I also want to add that we're trying to stay local on these endeavors and these items will be coming from old sales.
Thank you, Dan. Madam clerk?
Authorize the allocation not to exceed ten thousand dollars to Penfield Township trustees to complete their playground by installing recycled rubber matting under the swings. If there is any funding left, Penfield would apply it towards keeping the recycled building operating.
And Eleanor Gannan, Penfield Township clerk, is here. Eleanor, would you like to expand on this request for the board, please?
When we applied for this money, we had, well, underneath some of our playground equipment, we've got, it's over ninety percent is a right, Dan, of recycled material. And we used that as a measure for what we thought we would need, well, lo and behold, when they come out, you have to have like double the height of the swing set, so it's coming out to like a hundred by fifty-three. And they gave us a quote of thirteen thousand nine hundred and forty dollars. I was yelling, negligent. I didn't do like Mary Beth. We've got pictures making from what it is. It's a checkerboard, twelve-inch, do I write, twelve-inch base of recycled rubber?
It's about six inches base.
Six inch.
Twelve-inch squares.
Twelve-inch squares, okay. And it's over ninety percent recycled. We've already got it under part of our playground and we'd like to finish it off and put it in our swing sets. So, we appreciate it very much and the help you could give us.
So, you're almost done with the park then?
Yeah.
And then this would, this is by code, though, isn't it? You have to have a certain.
It'll all be done in the one park, by code. We've got another park that still has a swing set, but we're, we've got mulch under that, so we're gonna wing it for a while on that one, but then both parks will be done once we do the other swing set. But we do have mulch under it, so it's not double the height of what they want.
And what will be the match from Penfield? Will that be the three thousand nine hundred and forty dollars?
The installation is forty-two fifty. The thirteen nine forty would be the cost and I'd like to add that for the cost of the, of the material itself and then the match would be the forty-two fifty.
Forty-two.
Four thousand two hundred and fifty dollars for installation.
So, your request is for?
Thirteen thousand nine hundred and forty.
So, you're asking, you're not asking for ten thousand, you're asking?
No, we're asking for thirteen, that's the cost of the actual material from the swing set.
Which is that rubber and then the plant, right, Dan?
And on the, our recycling program, we've more than, I know we've already requested for a match, but we've more than done fifty percent already, so.
And your recommendation, I'm asking Mr. Billman for his recommendation. Thank you, Eleanor.
Yes, I would thoroughly recommend this project. It's a continuation of a project that we did last year under the closed boot ramp. They did a partial portion of their playground and it come out real nice, it's done in brown colors. Again, we're keeping everything in-house. The plastic squares are made by Draco Plastic, they're recycled plastic and that's in Ridge ville. And the, the sales organization is Turtle Plastics, which they hold the contract for this type of material. Commissioner Moore, you asked me a question that, what this material is made out of. Last, two weeks ago, Amherst had, was going to put down the same type of installation. There's a membrane, your shredded rubber, and then another membrane and it's contained by recycled plastic barrier and then the squares on top.
Okay.
It's done in brown colors.
Okay.
And it's, it's been working out very well. If you would go out to Penfield now, after a year, it's still as resilient as when the day it was put in, whereas if you go in to the other playground with the mulch, as they use, it's compacted. And this is virtually maintenance-free, just about. compacted, and this is virtually maintenance-free just about.
Thank you.
Now, the money stays in accounting. I like that.
Other questions? What is the project plan with the board?
I'll so move.
That's for the thirteen nine forty?
Nine forty.
Okay. I'll second.
Continue discussion? Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Approve payment to victims of domestic violence, Loraine County State Harvard Incorporated, DBA Genesis House for the amount of thirty-one thousand one hundred and fifty-seven dollars as collected by Loraine County for the period January first, two thousand one, through June thirtieth, two thousand one. The collection and payment are pursuant to O R C three one one three point three four.
So moved.
So I continue.
Discussion. Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Dr. Ballard, county administrator?
No report.
That's three times, man, you had a shot.
Ms. Ennis?
I have no report.
Commissioners' report?
Yeah, I have something. I was at the National Association of Conferences in Philadelphia this weekend. It was really interesting, but I did want to bring back some information, especially in regards to welfare reform. The commissioners across the United States are very, very concerned. It was such a hot issue that it was, one of the sessions was televised out there and put on the news later in the evening. But there's two bills right now, Senate Bill nine fifty-three and Senate Bill five sixty-five, that the commissioners are concerned is going to be an unfunded mandate for electronic voting equipment, and if this happens, it's, I called Global. That's the company that came out, I believe it was last year, that showed us at the Holiday Inn what this equipment was like, and there was a lot of discussion down there in regards to different touch-type voting equipment, and Global is, has been sold out, I believe, to Depot or some other company, which is a worldwide company. But when I talked to the representative from this company and asked them the cost, they said, they estimated the cost after calling the election board, that it would cost Loraine County between two-point-eight million and three million dollars for this equipment. And, like I said, I think it's going to be an unfunded mandate that's going to come down from the feds. Another issue out there that was of concern to the commissioners was groundwater contamination from raw sewage, and they're saying from ten to thirty percent of the septic tanks are malfunctioning to some degree, so that was another big issue. And, you know, John and I spoke yesterday, and there's, with the election reform facing the county and state freezes, along with the cost to renovate EMA and nine-one-one, being charged against the nine, the six million dollars on appropriated funds, I think we're going to have to look at that unappropriated money because actually, once we appropriate the nine-one-one charges and the EMA against the unappropriated, we'll probably have about four-point-four million left of unappropriated money. And that doesn't even include the sixty thousand dollars that Domestic Relations is looking for, for indigent attorney fees, and I think at this time, I would like to move that we appropriate three million of that four-point-four million for the voting machines, and this would not include training for the poll workers or the election workers, election board workers.
Well, Madam Commissioner, I appreciate your report, but I'm not sure what timeframe this is going to come before us, and I'm not willing to appropriate monies at this time for something that's not been finalized.
Well, I kind of think, one way or another, it's going to come down real soon, and I'd rather see that money set aside, and if it doesn't come down, we'll have it there just in case. If it doesn't come down immediately, I mean, we're safe, but if it does.
I think the federal government's going to mandate us to purchase this equipment. I think it's an issue we should deal with at that point. Right now, we can't even decide if we should combine the two offices. I think first, we should combine the two offices. We've been paying over a hundred thousand dollars a year to rent two buildings in this county, and I don't even know how much that's cost over the last ten to fifteen years. So, I think issue number one is, where's the Board of Elections going to be before we even discuss buying electronic equipment? The Board of Elections was supposed to get back to us after our last meeting, or two meetings ago, and they have yet to come back with their decision, and last I know, they haven't even had a meeting, so.
I think it's an ongoing issue.
Yeah, so I think it's something that.
I appreciate the information. When the Board of Elections was here, they quoted a figure of five million dollars.
That's what I had heard.
It doesn't sound to me like they were as in-depth as you were, but at the same time, I'm not willing to allocate monies until I have something more concrete.
Well, I talked with Tom Smith yesterday, and he had one of the people from the Board of Elections check on it for me, too, and I also talked with someone from Global. But that's what we think the cost is going to be, not including training, so I think it's right around the corner. As a matter of fact, Brook Park is going to have a special election in August that we're invited to, using this electronic touch-type of equipment, and they would like us to go down there and view that. So, there are other counties that are already gearing up for it and getting this equipment in. I think there's only two types. There's some equipment that you, that the blind can vote with, and it talks back to you. Once you touch it and vote, it'll ask you if that's the person you really want to vote for.
You ought to ask all of us that.
That's true. Sure. I like that.
I'm not sure if we want anything that talks back to me.
Well, I like it to be the voice.
So, we will take those items under consideration and continue to look at what's happening.
Is there anything else?
But keep it under consideration because there's only four-point-four million left in there, and now like that, I'm going to also ask that we replace the six-hundred-and-seventy-eight-thousand dollars that we used for the redesign of the Justice Center, and that was taken from the ten million that was set aside for the Justice Center. I'd like to replace that in there before we dig into that unappropriate.
Say that again.
We have, we have used six-hundred-and-seventy-eight-thousand dollars to redesign the Justice Center. That's additional money to what we had expected to use.
But where does that fit in overall with what we're doing, John?
Good morning, John Roca, City County Budget Director. I think what Commissioner Vacy is alluding to is that there was approximately six-hundred-and-twenty-eight-thousand dollars additional appropriated out of the ten million that we have set aside in the general fund for the additional fees to do the schematics on the redesign. The accounting of that was proper. It was taken out of the ten million dollars that was set aside for the Justice Center, and that ten million is part of the twenty-two million that we've been talking about that's been set aside. So, the long and short of it is, the ten million now is short by approximately six-hundred-and-twenty-eight-thousand at the board's choosing. They may wish to appropriate unappropriated monies back into that ten-million-dollar pool, or not.
Was there another fifty thousand, John?
I don't have the numbers in front of me, Commissioner Vacy, but it approximates, there was a fifty-thousand-dollar fee, and then I believe there was a fee of about six-hundred-thousand, so it came to about six-hundred-and-twenty-eight-thousand.
Okay, because I thought at one time that Jim Cordes was saying that there was an additional bill for fifty thousand, but I would even like us to put the six-hundred-and-twenty-eight-thousand back into the ten-million account.
Is it six-hundred-and-twenty-eight or six-hundred-and-seventy-eight? I heard two different figures.
Well, I'm not sure the fifty thousand, so I'll hold up on that until Jim gets back and I get more clarification on that, but the six-hundred-and-twenty-eight-thousand is definite, that's right here.
Okay, so why don't we wait till Jim gets back next week and do the whole thing?
We could research and then pull the appropriation that was done to pay that payment. We could, if the board chooses, handle that next week, but we can get the exact figure, which we don't have in front of us.
Thank you, John.
Could we wait and tell Jim?
Would you put that, make a note to put that back on the agenda when Jim gets back and to have Jim?
He's going to be sorry he came back.
And to have Jim review this to get the exact amount.
Thank you. Is that the end of your report?
Well, I just want you to, once again, I'm going to urge you to keep in mind that Welfare Reform Act that's going through and, keep in mind that let's please not spend all that unappropriated money real fast because we're going to be needing it real fast.
Did you get information on all this, that, from the meetings? If you could, as copies?
The welfare reform?
Yeah.
I just got copies of the two bills that are up.
Okay.
There wasn't too much information that they were passing out, but I want to pass this on to, well, I was out there, I went to the Hall of Independence, the Independence Hall out there, and it was really amazing. It just gives you goosebumps to see the chair that George Washington sat in and what our forefathers went through for our independence and how they closed the curtains and the doors, because when they broke from Britain, when they, there was the king, and actually, they jeopardized their families, their wealth, and their lives when they signed that Declaration of Independence and broke from, from the king. And actually, they could have been put up for treason and their heads on the block or that, you know, they could have been hung, and it was just amazing to see this, and I did take some pictures. If they turn out, I'll let you see them. And to see the liberty ballot was just fascinating.
Thank you, Commissioner Vacy. Commissioner Moore?
Always. Now, what I would like to know is, who's in charge of the furniture here? I mean, would it be Dr. Blair? Our maintenance guys? Could you get these two, these three tables pulled up even with this? Because we had Juan is up here, and he was asked to sit in the audience because he couldn't sit in our tables, and it seems like it's in the way of the camera.
Yes, sir.
And I think it'd be more appropriate to have our director sit at the tables here. So, if we could have those lined up, I think farther up, is that okay with the two of you?
I agree.
The only reason I think they're back is because we can't have a walkway through there then. You can work on something.
Yeah, we just take one table away and.
That's a good idea.
I just think it'd be more appropriate for our directors.
We don't want Juan to feel left out.
Well, you know, I think he needs a hug afterwards, so.
[laughing].
Okay.
Is there anything else?
That's all, I noticed.
Okay, I do have a couple items. I would like to ask the board to appoint, and I will so move, that we appoint Nancy Parker from Invacure Corporation to serve on the WIB board. This recommendation was made to us by Frank DiTillio of the Loraine County Chamber of Commerce, and I attended the WIB board meeting this week, and I gave you a report on it, but this is one item I think needs to be taken care of immediately. The other items, we're all working on, so I would like to make that in the form of a motion, hoping someone will second it.
That's dated July eighteenth. That was on the July eighteenth. I didn't read this yet. It's on my desk today, though. Do we have to do it today?
It was on the desk this morning, but I didn't see it. Was there a bio?
Oh, even a picture. That's a nice bio.
That's not her.
Oh, there isn't?
That's on one of the other programs.
She started asking for photos from people now, right?
See what you started, Mary Beth. You may have your photos back, though, because I think you'd probably have a better use for them than we would. They're lovely photos. Thank you.
Do you want to step down? Because there's a lot, seems to be some turnover.
These are, these are the current members, and we are working on new members because we have to have fifty-one percent be private businesses. This was the most recent list that I received when I went to a meeting at the ETA. So, this name was submitted to us prior to that, and she did attend the meeting Wednesday, and I think that she ought to be, have official status, and we will continue to work on those names.
What's her bio?
Frank DiTillio submitted a letter as the.
That was on yesterday.
That's my memo. There's no bio there. I didn't even include the letter. The letter that we received a couple weeks ago. I'd just like to have her be established as a member so that we can move on and keep our almost fifty-one percent current. This is not a final list, but have I sold you on that yet?
I'd like to see a bio.
I'm not sure she submitted a bio. I think that she probably volunteered. She is the Group Human Resources Director from Invacure Corporation. We are soliciting support from private businesses on this council, and sometimes it's hard to get people to come.
Oh, I know.
And so, she's volunteered, and now she showed up, so I think we ought to.
You asked for a bio on my person. I'd like the same one there.
I'm trying to be fair.
Yes, I know.
Is that okay?
That's what I want. Fairness.
Oh, gee.
You put me on the spot with this one.
I certainly intended to. You want me to go over this, the whole report?
No, not the report, but.
Well, you know, they've got business to do, and we asked them to do it. We need to give them a board.
I'm not saying I'm going to, not going to, you know.
Well, so then second the motion.
No, I got it.
Cheating.
No, I'm on this. If I put you on the spot last week, this is what you do.
Hey, that's my turnabout's fair play. I mean, gee whiz, with this volunteer position to go to seven-thirty in the meeting morning.
Oh, man, I'm glad you brought the stress ball with me.
You want to use brain, too?
Can we wait a week? I mean, you know.
You can do whatever you want. You're a commissioner.
I'll wait till I get a bio. Oh, well, we're all commissioners.
I'm not asking for a bio. I'm accepting Frank DiTillio's recommendation.
Okay.
Okay, if you want a bio, you can contact him and ask for it, because I'm not going to.
I'll talk to Frank. I'll call Frank.
Thank you, okay. The next item I'd like to comment on is Commissioner Vacy's remarks that she made about the NACO meeting, and you made a reference to groundwater waste from septic, and last Friday, and David Ashenhurst gave us an upfront meeting that NOAACA was going to hold their meeting last Friday, and the report from NOAACA dealt, and I don't have any notes here, but dealt with household sewage waste, and it's a three-year study that was conducted by NOAACA and two other counties that are part of a different metropolitan planning organization, Portage and Summit, and it's an extensive report that was given to NOAACA last week, and it talks about the failing systems and the NOAACA board moved to accept the report and to encourage the state legislators and others to work on upgrading regulations, and so I have, I have a copy of the letter to the editor that I submitted since neither of the local newspapers saw fit to send a reporter to the meeting, and I was so disturbed because this was such important information, I felt, for Loraine County, that I did my own report. So, I'll share that with you, but I didn't realize we were going to discuss that today, but NOAACA has been upfront with their two-thousand clean water, and this was part of it, and Pam Davis, who used to be an employee in our Community Development Department and now works for NOAACA, she was the principal on this, and she made the report, and, and we were at the Adam Joseph Lewis Research Center, which has their own living machine, which environmentally treats the wastewater in that building and then reuses the water for flushing of toilets and stuff, and so I thought it was just a wonderful array of things that came together at Oberlin College, so I want to publicly thank Oberlin College for hosting us, and that would conclude my comments.
All's business? I have none. Mr. Moore?
I see we have.
Others than what you listed.
Oh, okay.
Do you have anything other than what you listed? And I don't either, Madam Clerk.
Number one, authorize the reappointment of Mary Ann Tittlebaum to Loraine County Children's Services Board for another four-year term effective retroactive, July first, two thousand one, expiring June thirty, two thousand five.
Dr. Crowe has conferred with Jerry Ennis and supplied copy of updated Ohio Revised Code that allows us to have nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen members on this board. Last week, I said I thought we were capped at thirteen, but apparently the legislation has been updated, so I would like to suggest to the board that since we can have an additional appointment, as provide, information provided by Jerry Ennis, that we, I'll move to approve the reappointment of Mary Ann Tittlebaum, and I will also include in that motion the appointment of Barbara Kilgore.
So, you're talking about fourteen members? How many do we have now?
Thirteen.
Thirteen, and this won't make it fourteen?
Right.
Okay, and by law, that's all we're allowed for a county of our size.
Like Dan's on the board, he's like, he's like tightening right up over there.
Five members, and the Board of County Commissioners of a county having a population of one hundred thousand or more, according to such census, may appoint up to nine additional members. So, five and nine would be our fourteen members. That's it.
Yeah, if I may comment on that, the thirteen number works out very, very well when, when we do voting. You put fourteen on there, it's an even number, and you might get into a deadlock. We used to have only five or six members for years, and we finally got to the thirteen number, and it's working out very, very well with thirteen. We have some very dedicated. We have some very dedicated people on that board.
Did anybody ask for your comments?
I know. I stood up because David said something, and I appreciate your time, you know.
I made, I made a motion. Anybody want to second my motion?
I'll second it, but I would like to add to that, Dan. I think a board of that size also helps when you want to have committees. There are committees, and you have enough people on the board, then.
What do you want, Commissioner Moore?
Well, now that I, since about last minute, I know we can get two. I, like I said, I have four people.
No, you can't get two. What are you talking about?
Well, yeah, well, I have four people I was going to put on there. I didn't know I could get two more. I mean, now that I knew that, I would have brought another bio with me today, you know.
Well, is there any other discussion on the motion?
Oh, man.
Don't get greedy. You've got three years.
One.
I thought this was a great compromise. I was really excited about this, and now you're not happy. You want more.
Oh, come on, that's my name.
Wow, yeah, I'm not going to go there. I'm not going to touch that. I believe that the appointments are to be for four-year terms. Is that correct, Mr. Ennis?
I believe that's correct.
Okay, so, that my motion will stipulate the term for Mary Ann Tittlebaum as it's shown here, and then for Barbara Kilgore, I would be effective today for four years.
Goodness.
Is there any further discussion on the motion?
You've got a motion in a second. Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mrs. Vacy?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Go ahead.
I would like to thank you for the compromise, okay?
You're welcome. Thanks to Dr. Crowe.
Thank you. Dan's over there squirming now, because he's got an even-numbered board.
Item number two, the Assistant Prosecutor has not had an opportunity to finalize his reviewing of this. Is that correct?
That's correct, Commissioner.
So, we will hold this until next meeting, please.
Actually, I have to talk to Wayne Milet, and he's going to be gone for a couple of weeks, so you might want to hold it till two weeks. And I've checked with the engineer, there's no problem with delaying it that long.
Okay, why don't we just hold it until Mr. Ennis's review is, finished with his review, and then we'll place it back on the agenda. Thank you, Jerry.
Authorized appointment of Barbara Schrell to Lorraine County Fair Housing Board to fill the unexpired term of Patricia Robinette, who resigned, term ends effective July 12, 2001, effect, excuse me, expiring February 21st, 2004.
And Commissioner Vacy advises us that she doesn't have the bio.
We didn't get her bio yet.
Should we just table it?
We'll just hold it.
Should have it next week.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Vacy?
None here.
Mr. Moore?
Nothing, thanks.
I have none. I move the reading of the board correspondence be waived.
Second. Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mrs. Vacy?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Audience participation, public comment. Anyone here yet?
Derek Hito, Honeymoon Township. It's come to my attention that when the 2002 solid waste grants are presented to the townships for their, for their application, four of the townships that I'm aware of have had their grant maximums cut. I wish to point out to the commissioners that, in my opinion at least, this is being penny-wise and pound-foolish. Two of those townships have expressed concerns that they cannot run a recycling program with the grant monies that they will be allowed in 2002. The whole purpose of this was to encourage recycling throughout the county, and in my township, which is the only one I can speak of from personal experience, our biggest problem is getting new people into our program. We have a very loyal group of people who participate every two weeks in recycling drop-off, but we do not get new people. And I strongly suggest that you reconsider cutting these grants, because I think in the long run, it will do far more harm than the little bit of money that save will do good, and that is my opinion.
Thank you for your comments, Mary Beth. Since this is a very important issue, I, I think I would like Dan to make a response, especially in view of the fact that we received facts yesterday from Pittsfield Township reiterating much of what you're talking about. And I did discuss with Dan, and, and he can address that issue, but apparently, this is in response to a letter that has gone out from your department.
First of all, I don't know where you're getting your information, Mary Beth, but we have not even sent out the grants structure yet. So, we have not denied anybody any money at this point in time. We do have a structure that is put forth by the Planning Board, Planning Policy Committee, okay? And it's been in effect since 1993. The reason for the letter that we sent out is, is that it looked like we were getting, we were getting out of hand with, with these, these grants. The plan calls for 940,000, okay? That's what the plan says. In the years past, it seems to be creeping up and up and up, and last year, our grant structure was about 1.4 or something, okay? We waited till this year to, to do this, because the grants are based on community data in the census. So, we got the new census data, and we went through the whole list and reset the funding And actually, the totals coming out of, of our figures right now that will be put out, as I told you earlier today, was 1.250,000, 1,250,000. I estimate that probably when it's all said and done, because we do, the commissioners and our department do have some discretion on, on these grants, that it will be around 1.3 million is what we give out, maybe a little bit more. We're actually only digressing, we're, we're probably going to be saving in a neighborhood of 100,000 or a little bit more than that. Some of the communities must feel that they're going to be under a hardship, and some communities do a very, very good job of, of recycling, and some of the townships do an awful good job. And we'd hate to see them take the attitude that if they're not going to get $2 instead of $1, that they would drop out of a recycling program because of that. I'd like to see some of the communities step up and, and help fund some of the programs that we have initiated in the past. I think it's the thing to do. I think that sometimes when money becomes tight, we have to look at other issues and move on. But I don't see, at this point in time, where they're getting their information as far as what communities are going to be cut, because we haven't actually even sent out the grant structure yet.
That was what we authorized today, is that right?
Right, right. And that'll be going out, and it's got to be back in by November. And once those, once that grant process is completed, then it'll come back into the district office. We'll look at them, make recommendations to you, the Board of Commissioners, and you'll have the final say on the grant program, as far as the actual dollars and cents.
All right, thank you. Did you have further question, Mary Beth?
Well, only to respond to Dan's question of where I got the information from, I got it from the individual townships, and I happened to see the letter that was sent to Rochester Township when they were cut from 10,000 to something over 5,000. It's extremely difficult to run these programs when your cut, your funds are cut in half. In case of, well, I think every township's had a population increase since the last census, and fuel costs are up. People are aware of that, I'm sure. Those that are having the blue bag system, I wouldn't be surprised if they don't have a raise in cost just because of fuel. So, that's where I got my information from. It is a concern to us in the townships.
Thank you, and I, I know, we appreciate your comments, and yours as well, Dan. Anyone else in the audience who wishes to, Mike Sherman?
Thank you, Commissioners. I'll be extremely brief. I just wanted to extend an invitation to the Commissioners and the general public. Once again, on Sunday, September the 2nd, which is the Sunday of Labor Day weekend, Lorraine County organized labor will be sponsoring a family festival at Lakeview Park. This is open to the general public. The general public is encouraged to attend. This is for all working people and their families. The cost of the event is free, the admission is free. What we do is subsidize this through sponsorships, labor union participation, private participation, public authorities. Mr. Billman's office is on board. They are working in conjunction with the Lorraine Parks Department for recycling effort that day, County Blood Bank, Community College, banks, businesses, private sector, public sector. What we do with this money is, we make it as cost-free for the general public as possible. Pops a quarter, chips are a quarter, hot dogs are a quarter, numerous entertainment venues for the, for the children, eight live bands will be performing, there's a car show. Again, we do this all through sponsorships, so that a, a working family can, can attend at a very, very minimal cost. Information regarding individual sponsorships and participations was forwarded to Mr. Cordez's office, I believe, and just want to re-invite all of you and the general public. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Anyone else? If not, I move we adjourn.
Second.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Vacy?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks.